Means Committee, we are here for City Council Resolution 21-0062, our American Rescue Plan Quarterly Oversight Hearing, Third Quarter Review. Mayor Costello, Councilman for the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joining me to my left, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District. To my right, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Danny McCray, 2nd District Member of the Committee. To my immediate right, Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. On behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott, we have City Administrator Chris Shorter. We are going to jump right in. Director Kearney, I don't think you have to get up, the mics are on at the desks. Oh, I got it.
This is in color.
In color, okay. The black and white was working just good. Director Kearney, I think your mic's on, so you should be good to go. We've got the slide deck up on the TV. Take it away.
All right. Can you all hear me well?
Yep. And Director, if you can keep your presentation, I don't know, plus or minus 15, 20 minutes.
I figured you'd say that, so there are only 15 slides.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Good morning, members of the council. I'm Shamaya Kearney. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. I'm also joined by our Project Manager, Patrick Williams, and of course, CIO Shorter. And today, I'm providing an overview of the last report that was submitted to the United States Department of Treasury as required by the American Rescue Plan Act. The slide presentation focuses on obligations and expenditures that are required to be reported in that report. Just a few things to note to make sure that we're all on the same page regarding this information, that the period of performance for the last Treasury report covers January 1st, 2022 through March 30th, 2022. The US Department of Treasury does not factor in commitments, only obligations and expenditures. So what that means is that in general, when we have provided funding announcements, where we've talked about the overall amounts that have been provided to agencies, we consider those to be commitments. The Department of Treasury doesn't recognize that. They only want obligations, which are the funds that we have provided to agencies for that current fiscal year budget and any expenditures against that obligation. And data reported to the Treasury are by expenditure category and at specific time intervals. So these are quarterly reports. Therefore, the data that is included in the Treasury report does not align with the monthly reports that we provide to council. Also, on the public-facing dashboard, where we've aggregated information to make it easier for our residents to understand investments that we're making with the American Rescue Plan Act dollars.
Director, can you hang on one second?
Sure.
Colleagues, we're going to hold substantive questions till the end, but I do have one question for clarification.
Sure.
Just because the language is used throughout the report, I just want to make sure that everyone on the committee fully understands the terminology that we're using, specifically obligations, expenditures, and commitments. So if you can humor me and let me just explain what I think it means, and then correct me if I'm wrong, and make sure everyone on the committee is on the same page. So an obligation, as you're defining it in this presentation and discussion, is when the money is transferred from the general fund to a specific agency, correct?
That is correct, and for the fiscal year, because as you'll recall, this is over a number of fiscal years.
A year. Perfect. And we've been joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey, from the 3rd District, Member of the Committee. An expenditure occurs after an obligation has been made, and the agency actually expends those dollars and either grants them to someone, to a CBO, or utilizes those funds to perform a specific service or purchase a specific product, correct?
That is correct. And in some cases, in particular, where we're referencing the Economic Recovery Fund, an expenditure on our side would be if we were invoiced for an amount that we've been provided to one of our fiscal agents. So for example, if we are providing overall $10 billion to the Baltimore Development Corporation, and then we have fiscal year budgets, and we say that we're going to provide $2 million in fiscal year '22. When they invoice us, that becomes an expenditure because it's been transferred from the general fund to that organization. It doesn't mean that they've made subgrants to the grantees that they're going to be providing funding to, which is why we have a distinction between subawards, which is also a part of the presentation.
Okay. So you define an expenditure as... Once... Because I'm confused how that's different between obligation and an expenditure.
Because it's a spend from the recovery office, although the fiscal agent hasn't spent by granting funding to a grantee.
Okay. So, let me start back from the top. An obligation is when we take money that's in the ARPA umbrella, and we send it from the general fund to an agency, right?
Correct.
It's an obligation. An expenditure is when we take the money from the agency and then actually spend it on a product or a service or a grant.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Mara James, Assistant Budget Director, I just want to clarify that the ARPA funds are not in the general fund.
They're in mayorality-related, I'm sorry.
But not under the general fund. They're in federal funds, so just want to make that.
The federal fund under mayorality-related, correct?
Correct, but in terms of the fund source. Just confirming, not general funds.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. So they're in... Can I say mayorality-related for the sake of...
For the service, yes, but they're federal funds, in terms of the fund.
Which is a bucket within mayorality-related.
So there's different fund sources. There's the general fund, state funds, special grants, special revenue funds.
Right, but that all... Okay. But that exists in mayorality-related, in that service?
Under mayorality-related, the ARPA office does exist under mayorality-related, yes.
Okay.
And they are funded with federal funds.
So the money came from the federal government, it went to the general fund, and last year, we appropriated it to mayorality-related, specifically the ARPA office, correct?
It did not go into the general fund. It was in federal funds.
Okay. All right, so the...
But yes, it is in mayorality-related ARPA.
Okay. All right. So there's an ARPA bucket within mayorality-related service, correct? And the source of that funding being federal, correct? Okay. Got it. Thank you. Okay. So we've got obligations, we have expenditures, and then a commitment is an announcement, right? Like if the mayor says...
That's correct.
"We're going to commit X number of dollars to do this thing at this agency or this place."
That's correct.
Colleagues, is everyone clear on the definition of an obligation, an expenditure, and a commitment? Any questions on that? All right. Director, thank you. Take it back, please.
Okay. I think I left off at bullet three, which is just that, again, the information or the data will not align with the monthly council reports or with the public-facing dashboard. And then lastly, as we start to talk more about the expenditures, just understanding that many of our agencies are still designing or standing up programs and determining who their grantees are. So therefore, some of the performance data is a little bit limited. But of course, as programs continue to stand up and as agencies continue to determine grantees and sign contracts and agreements and things of that nature, we'll be providing more performance data as that information becomes available.
And Director, can you put the mic a little...
I'm sorry.
You can take your mask off if you want. If you don't want to, just... Oh, much better. If you don't want to, anyone who doesn't want to, just put the mic closer.
No, that's... Thank you. I appreciate that. I was concerned about... So I also wanted to go over some of the changes since the last report. One of the things that I've shared with council is that there have been several changes the Treasury has made over time, and so there were also some additional changes that were made prior to the submission of the April 2022 report. One of those is that some of the expenditure categories of some of our projects changed as a result of expenditure changes that the United States Department of Treasury made. And all of our projects have been categorized under the appropriate new expenditure categories. Demographic data is also required for certain projects, specifically if the project serves an impacted or disproportionately impacted community. And then also, evidence-based interventions are now required, data for certain projects, on how much funding has been allocated for those interventions. So we're not required to report on the intervention, but just on how much money has been allocated for that purpose. Also, since the last report, we announced three new projects. That was the Vaccine Incentives, Food Insecurity, and Lexington Market. The other thing that changed is that because of the expenditure category changes, we had to make a designation between one of our projects had to be separated into two because of changes to the expenditure categories. So now, for the Baltimore Development Corporation, we have one project that's specifically for grant funding to small businesses and another for technical assistance. So that will accurately reflect the amount of dollars that we're spending on each of those. And we split those for the last report. In addition, we're reporting new expenditures in six projects that did not have expenditures as of the last report, which the period of performance covered the date of award through December 31st, 2021. And those projects include Visit Baltimore Recovery Assistance, Baltimore City Workforce Development, Reducing Baltimore Violence, Improving Community Violence Interventions, Baltimore Office of Promotion and the Arts Recovery Assistance, our COVID-19 Health Response, specifically to some of the staffing and payroll costs, and also some expenses or expenditures, rather, against the broadband and digital equity Phase 1. So the new projects, this is just a general overview of what those projects cover. The Vaccine Incentives are currently at an amount of $10.4 million. That was a $1,000 payment to city employees who received their COVID-19 vaccination. For Food Insecurity, that's an $11 billion investment that covers COVID-19 produce distribution, online SNAP fruit and vegetable incentives, expansion of nutrition incentives at farmers' markets, MedStar's Good Food Program, and the Farm Alliance's Black Butterfly Urban Farmer Academy Program. And then lastly, Lexington Market at $4.9 million, which includes funds for stall build-out and for new and legacy vendors at the newly constructed Lexington Market. So now, I'll get a little more deep into the obligations and expenditures for the period of January 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2022. For that period of performance, we reported $89 million in obligations, as well as $14 million, nearly $15 billion in expenditures across 23 projects, across 19 expenditure categories as designated by Treasury. Through March 2022, our total expenditures increased to $27 million, and that's about 31% of our obligations for that period of performance.
Director, you mentioned... Did I just hear you correctly? I thought you said 50 million in obligations or expenditures, I'm sorry?
14.
14, okay. Oh, in the top bullet. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then, just lastly, from our January report, our obligations increased by about 25%, and our reported expenditures increased by 115%, which means that we are starting to spend more in this second quarter of reporting. The next slide provides an overview of the obligations and expenditures as reported in that April 30th report. I won't go through them individually, but you'll see by some of the project names that we've identified in our Treasury report what those total obligations are and the spend against those obligations. And again, those numbers just equal up to the ones that I talked about on the last slide, which is our 89 million in total obligations and our 27 million in expenditures in this period. One of the things to note, which I include at the bottom, is just that some of our spending amounts reported are preliminary because we do have changes that may occur if things are posted to the wrong account and things of that nature. So we should consider those to be preliminary numbers, but of course, every quarter, we go through the effort of reconciling and making sure that accounts are correct and assigned to the right account numbers and making those corrections in the following Treasury report as needed. So one of the things that we talked about when I first opened was what we're calling subawards. So where the recovery office has granted funding to an agency or to an organization, and that agency or organization is also providing grants to other community-based organizations to help carry out their projects. So you'll see on Slide 10 that we have five organizations that have provided subawards to organizations. 16 from MONZI at $17 million. The Baltimore Civic Fund is 144 at $3.9 million. Visit Baltimore, 37 awards at $2.3 million. The Family League of Baltimore, 182 subawards at $1.8, nearly $1.9 million. And then MoED with 11 subawards at $6.2 million. So again, these are either grants that have been provided to organizations or these are contractual agreements that an organization or that an agency has entered into for services.
Director, can you explain the discrepancy between the numbers on Page 10 and 9? And I, for example, Visit Baltimore, on Page 10, it's 2.35 million and $2, but 2.35 million. But on Slide 9, it's 2.5 million. Is that because the amount on Page 10 is being used by Visit Baltimore to go to grantees?
So I explained a little bit earlier that if an organization invoices us, we consider that an expenditure. So we were invoiced by Visit Baltimore... You said Visit Baltimore, right?
Yeah.
For the entire $2.5 billion, which we paid. Then, from that 2.5, Visit Baltimore has provided 2.35, as of the data reporting, to organizations that they are to hotels that they are providing grants to.
Okay. So that... And these numbers could be... That could be internal as well. For example, again, just in the example of Visit Baltimore, the 2.35 million, like, a million of that could have been theoretically spent by the agency, and a million point 3.5 could have been used for grants. The numbers on... The dollar figures on Page 10, those don't just reflect grants going out. Those could be internal agency operations. Is that correct?
Yes. There is a percentage of that funding that can be provided for administrative costs. That's correct.
Okay. So just to summarize, the discrepancy between the numbers on Slide 10 and Slide 9 deal with the... Say that one more time. I think I'm struggling.
So I don't want to qualify that as a discrepancy, because I don't think that's the case.
The difference, the difference.
Okay. So the 2.35 from Visit Baltimore is grants that were provided to hotels and administrative costs. So that is actually money on the ground, whereas Slide 9 would show what we, the recovery office, were invoiced for and paid to Visit Baltimore to be able to provide those grants.
Got it. All right. I'm going to come back to that. Keep going. Please and thank you.
I think I went through that entire slide. So the appendix slides are just more detailed information on financial changes from the January to April report. As I mentioned, there were some organizations that didn't have a spend as of the January report that now do, and so we just provide that information in those subsequent two slides. And then, the last slide, I mentioned that there is not mandatory performance data that we're required to provide in our Treasury reports as of now, but we have provided some preliminary performance data in the council reports. So we just added that information in as well to provide an overview of some of the performance to date, particularly around applications for support, nonprofit grants that have been provided, and additional information for your easy review. And so that's the end of the formal presentation. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. And we're also joined by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee. Okay, so going back to Slide 9 and 10. So... MoED has an amount of $6.25 million on Slide 10, and that's the amount of awards... The amount awarded or committed. But their total on Slide 9 is total obligations of $3.77 million, with expenditures of 250K. How's... I guess I'm confused, because some of the numbers on Slide 10 for the agencies are bigger on Slide 10, and some of them are bigger on Slide 9, and I'm still struggling to understand the difference between what these two sets of numbers are. Does that make sense?
Sure. So for MoED, there's a little bit of a difference, because MoED has expended... They have ARPA funds, both from the state as well as from the city. And so this is a combination of ARPA funds, is probably what we're seeing here. But I would want to follow up with the team to make sure that I'm explaining that correctly.
We've also been joined by Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee. Okay, so on Slide 10, MoED, MONZI... MoED and MONZI have totals that exceed what you've reported to Treasury as of April 30th as total obligations.
So the total obligations for MONZI is the amount of funding that they receive for the fiscal year, that they will receive for the fiscal year.
So Slide 9, the $10.3 million, that is the amount that they have been obligated for the fiscal year? And Slide 10, $17.6 million is the total amount they have been obligated altogether?
That's right. For both of those, I'll want to follow up with the committee on that to make sure that I'm accurately explaining that, but I understand why you would have questions about those.
I'm sure there's a plausible explanation...
There is.
...that makes sense. And my understanding is that $50,300,000 has been committed to MONZI, multi-year?
Multi-year, that's correct.
$50,300,000, okay. And then Civic Fund is listed at $8.3 million in obligations, $6.23 million in expenditures, as of what's reported to Treasury. But on Slide 10, we have subawards summary of only $3.9 million for the Civic Fund?
That's right. And subawards. So that is money on the ground that is already in the hands of the organizations or money that they've committed to subawardees. What you see on Slide 9 is, again, the amount that we have been invoiced for, that the recovery office has been invoiced for and money that we have transferred to the Baltimore Civic Fund. On Slide 10, what you see is what they've committed to subgrantees.
Okay, so... And this was... This is why I thought the discussion of a common understanding of the terminology that we're using was important to help me understand what's going on here. So total... So in the example of the Civic Fund, $8.3 million total obligations. That means that we have transferred $8.3 million to the Civic Fund, correct?
That means that is the total award amount that the Baltimore Civic Fund will receive from the recovery office. That is what the $8.3 million is.
So isn't that synonymous with a commitment, though? Because a commitment is...
It is in this case, because this is not a multi-year award.
Okay, so this is a... This is a award that is taking place within fiscal year '22?
That's correct.
Okay. So we've obligated $8.3 million. So we have committed... Okay, so... We have both obligated and committed $8.3 million for fiscal year '22 to the Baltimore Civic Fund?
That is correct.
Okay. And we've expended $6.23 million, meaning that the Civic Fund has invoiced us for $6.23 million?
That is correct.
Got it. And then on Slide 10, we say that they have subawarded $3.9 million?
That is correct.
Can you help me understand what the delta is between the $3.9 million and the $6.23 million?
They simply haven't made additional awards at this time. They're still going through the process of making grants.
Got it.
They did rounds.
Got it. So we've... We've said we're going to give them $8.3. To date, we have given them $6.23. They have a bucket of $6.23, of which they've given out $3.9.
That is correct.
Got it. Okay. That's very helpful. So in the example of the Family League, and I'm assuming the recovery assistance lines up with the line item on Page 10, we've obligated $2 million, meaning we've given them that money. They have expended $2 million, meaning they have invoiced your office for the money.
That's correct.
And they have given out $1.88 million, meaning $1.88 has gone out the door to some programmatic...
To childcare facilities.
Function, right.
That's correct.
Meaning they have $120,000 left on hand from that specific allocation.
Or that that is their administrative fee.
Got it. So the amount of... Okay, so the short is, these numbers may never match up, and there's reasons for that in terms of the amount awarded, because an agency might have to use some of the money in order to expend the money, right? So the subaward amount reasonably could be less in many examples.
That is correct. The law identifies that organizations can use ARPA funding for to cover administrative costs, and in some grant agreements, we have agreed to a certain percentage of the administrative costs.
Got it. All right. I want to come back to that. I'm going to go to Councilman Schleifer in a second. I'm going to ask Councilwoman McCray's question first. Can you talk a little bit about the revenue stabilization funds? And I believe, my understanding was that we were setting aside $141 million, $11 million, which would be operations of this office over a three-year period, and then $130 million for revenue stabilization. So this can also go to the City Administrator and Department of Finance. Can you just talk about the status of that $130 million?
Sure. And I'll ask Mara to jump in where necessary, but the $130 million was one of the preliminary amount that BBMR determined would be needed for revenue loss that we would be able to claim for the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Since that time, there's been some changes in revenues. There's been... I think there's been a couple of things that where we projected that we would have a loss that we have not had a loss, or either we were able to recoup more money than what we initially thought, and so that revenue amount has adjusted. So in the FY '23 budget book, you'll notice that the budget... I'm sorry, the budget stabilization amount is now at $80 million. And I would turn it over to Mara to talk through some of the specifics of the difference between the 130 and the 80.
Yeah. What Director... Mara James, Assistant Budget Director, what Director Kearney said is correct. We have adjusted the estimate based on changing revenues. As we've shared with this council, we have seen a lot of bounce back, stronger bounce back than we've seen in some of our revenues. And so that amount that we had set aside is being reassessed each year to see how much we might need to kind of backfill our revenues there. The hope is that we won't need to use it, that we can keep being able to cut that number down from the 130, like we did to the 80 million now, and that those funds can be redirected back towards projects instead of to revenue stabilization.
That's helpful. This is the first time I'm hearing about the change in the designation of that $50 million. Do we... Where has that $50 million been reassigned?
So it's still, I believe, in just the general ARPA allocation. And it's been opened up to allow for other projects to now be funded rather than be held for possible budget stabilization to go, to be able to be redirected to projects as funding decisions get made around those.
And the 80 million as part of the original 130 million revenue stabilization, that's essentially cordoned off or quarantined similar to an assignment and fund balance, if you will, within that bucket of funding?
I don't know exactly how we have labeled it, but we know the amount that we have designated to be held for budget stabilization. And again, it was being reassessed each year to see, obviously that estimate was for the total length of the ARPA funding that we would have. And so each year, as we see whether or not we need to use it, we'll be reassessing that value.
So, so originally, we had talked about the 641 million dollars being split as follows. 11 million for operations of the office, 130 million for revenue stabilization, 400 million for agency requests, and 100 million for external projects. Where does, where does the 50 million now, is that an agency request or external?
I would have to defer to Director Kearney on that.
So we've had this conversation a couple of times, and I've not been able to track down this idea of the 100 million for external projects. What we've generally said in the last couple of hearings that I've participated in is that the general bucket for projects was 500 million, there was 130 for budget stabilization, there was 10.6 or 11 million for the operations of the Recovery Office. So we have talked about that as a general bucket for all projects, whether it's for external or nonprofit organizations and/or city agencies. I don't know where that 100 million dollar idea came from. I've not been able to track it down in any documentation or anything, so I'm not certain about that. But again, we've talked about it as one general bucket between nonprofits and city agencies.
I don't know if any of my colleagues recall, I want to say that I heard that in a hearing, but it doesn't matter. Neither good, bad, nor indifferent, it just is what it is. So let's go back then to the concept of, we know 11 is set aside for the operations of the office, and we know that we've reduced the amount set aside for revenue stabilization from 130 to 80, which would in effect increase the amount for projects from 500 to 550. Prior, when was this decision made to move 50 from revenue stabilization out of that bucket?
So as we were going through the revenue loss calculation and having discussions about the budget book, so my understanding is that council had already been briefed on the budget book, so that's actually a part of the ARPA chapter. You will see that reduction reflected there.
So we were briefed, we had, I had, I sat through five of these briefings, and I didn't hear about the reassignment of the 50 million dollars. So more specifically, my question is, when was that decision made, a specific point in time, when we decided that we were going to move the 50 out of the revenue stabilization umbrella? And maybe that question is more specifically for finance?
I can get back to you on that, exactly when that was decided. I believe that we, it was in the fall that we were looking at the calculations based on the federal formula and looking at our revenue projections likely, but I will get back to the committee on that.
Okay. Okay, yes, Mara, if you could get back to me with a date and time. So my, my last question on this piece, so the, prior to this decision being made, Director, we had 500 million for projects. And what I'm hearing you say is that it was never specifically delineated between which portion of that would be handled as like agency projects versus which would be like external in terms of grants? So my question is, I guess you can't really answer it because you don't know the specific date, but let's just say a couple of months ago for the sake of, I don't expect an answer to this question because I'm not asking a clear question, so just humor me for one second, please. A couple of months ago, it was believed that there would be 500 million dollars that would be used for projects. And theoretically, there was a split, right? Some of this would be used for, by agencies as part of their proposals, and some of it would be external grants. Where does that 50 million fall in this larger scheme of things and projects? Does that make sense?
Into the general, into the general project bucket.
So, so specifically, it doesn't fit neither one of those subcategories, it's just in the, in the projects, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's, everyone agrees with that answer? I'm just trying to understand, like, there's no, there's like, there's nothing planned for that 50 million that anyone's aware of? It's just in the bucket of, of projects, right?
It is in the general project bucket, but as we've also discussed, we have more requests, asking for more money than even what we have. So I don't know that I would, there is not a designation for it, like it's going to a specific project, that is correct. But is it in the general project bucket to be assigned to one of the many assets that we have? Yes.
And we're, I mean, we probably have over a billion and a half in terms of requests at least, right? Two billion, two and a half?
That's correct.
Something outrageous, yeah, large number. Okay, got it, very helpful. Councilman Schleifer.
Do we have a question limit, or?
Two, but if it's all related and quick, you know?
It's not all related, okay.
But we'll come back to you after.
Okay, thank you. So I'll start by the vaccination line. So the vaccine by employees, it says-
Councilman, what slide, and colleagues, just point out what slide you're on.
On Page 9. So how many employees got vaccines? Like, got this incentive? Because it says that the total expenditure is the total amount, but, I mean, it's also not a multiple of 1,000, so obviously there's some type of other costs associated with that. And then I assume we don't have 10,430 city employees that were vaccinated at that time? I'd like to be wrong, but I'm just-
One second, let me please, let me find that number. So the total number of employees that received the vaccination incentive were 9,870. There were also FICA and other taxes and things that we had to cover as a part of that, if I remember that conversation correctly. So that would be the entire, the entire amount. So we didn't have a, a set aside amount for vaccination incentives. So when you see that the obligation matches the expenditure, that is because we didn't have a certain, a set amount that we allocated or designated rather for vaccine incentives. So that's why that equals.
Councilman, one second related to that. Did folks get $1,000, like specifically $1,000 and zero cents added to their check? And we paid, you know, we gave a little more because taxes were taken out, or?
I'm, I'll defer to the CIO.
The workforce is paid out in a separate standalone check. So employee, we did not add $1,000 to an already existing paycheck. And in some cases, employees, depending on their tax category, receive more of that $1,000 than others.
So we expended 1,000, and then based on your tax bracket and your withholdings and things of that nature?
Correct.
You got, you got Y amount of money, which was different and less than 1,000?
That's correct.
Okay. The other line on here for ARPA administration, it says total obligations is 2.3 million. And this is, we're talking about for a quarter. So it was my understanding, I guess, that the total over the entire length of this project, which is multiple years, that the administration cost would be about 11 million dollars, 11 to 12 million. So is this the actual quarterly cost for administration is 2.3? So we're talking over $9 million of administrative cost per year?
It is the amount that was designated for FY '22. So there's going to be some underspend for that, for our office for FY '22 because we weren't fully staffed. There were a couple of other things where there's going to be a little bit of an underspend there.
So your total budget, the administration budget for these funds for the entire year is 2.3 million?
I have to pull a budget up, but I think that's right. But I think that's right, that is the amount that was established for, just for FY '22, but we're verifying.
So for, for a six-month period, or is that for the fiscal year '22, so a 12-month period?
It would have been for fiscal year '22, but recall, yes, for fiscal year '22.
So for 12 months?
That's correct.
So how many years is, is the plan, like, for this office to be operational through this project? This 641 million dollar project?
We anticipate that the office will exist throughout ARPA's the ARPA allocation to the city. And so, and we also anticipate that at least six months after ARPA closes, meaning December of '24, the ARPA office will exist to ensure that we are properly accounting for any, any undue, unspent funds. Understand also that there's, actually, I should not have put the six-month timeline because after 2024, we still have additional time, I believe, till 2026?
Right, all funds have to be fully awarded by the end of calendar year '24, fully spent by the end of calendar year '26.
So the office will exist through the period where funds should be spent.
So we're talking four years total, start to finish? Or four and a half years?
I will say four and a half years.
Okay. Okay, so in these expenditures, these line items here, on the expenditure side, is that only for the period of time which this presentation says it covers, which is January 1st, 2022 to March 30th, 2022?
Can you, I didn't hear your question, can you repeat that, please?
So the, the presentation says that it's for January 1st, the beginning of the year until March 30th. So my question is, on the, on Page 9, where it says the total, the total expenditures, that is the expenditures, it says as reported up until April 30th. So essentially, the first quarter of the year, the total expenditure during that period of time was 1.7 million dollars, is that correct?
Not, not during the three months, it's for the-
Cumulative.
That's correct.
Gotcha, so these numbers are not just for the period of time for the presentation. It's where we are from the start of last fiscal year up until, up until where we are as of the end date over there.
For this slide, that's correct.
Gotcha, okay, that explains that. My next question is, when, when are the nonprofits going to be getting the final approval, the ones that have advanced to the next level?
So we're still having those conversations, and right now, many of the organizations are completing their applications, and they haven't all come in yet. We want to make informed decisions, I think that's very important. So we want all the applications to be completed and then bring all of that information to the senior leadership team for deliberations and decisions. If we were to do it on a rolling basis, that would be unfair to some of the organizations if we were just to whoever got their application finished first. So we are working with those organizations to complete their, all of their applications and the supplemental documentation so that we can package all of that information and provide it to the senior leadership team.
So is that before the end of the fiscal year? Like, is there going to be answers before the end of this fiscal year?
That is, that is absolutely my hope. We are working with organizations and asking them to complete their applications as quickly as possible so that we can make those decisions before the end of the fiscal year.
Gotcha, so I appreciate that. And so you had mentioned that it would be unfair to do it on a rolling basis. So on that same topic, are the nonprofits that are getting money from these other sources, from these other third-party, whether it's Monsi or it's FISA Baltimore or any of these other places, are they going through the exact same process? Are they answering all the same questions that the nonprofits that are going through this channel? Are they following the same process?
So I think I answered this question in the last hearing as well, so I'll just say it again. Yes, there's a review process, there's a risk assessment, there's an application. Our organizations are following virtually the same process, that's, yes, that's correct. But as I also mentioned in the last hearing, that our agencies have specific purposes for which they are partnering with community-based organizations for. For the Recovery Office, it's a little bit more broad. We're not solely focused on community violence, we're not solely focused on education, we're not solely focused on health. We're doing all of those things, so it takes a little bit more time. And so I want to make sure that I underscore this because I think this is very important. We can spend the money fast and do it wrong, or we can take some time and really have some strategy around it. We've had a lot of conversations, and even members of this body have publicly talked about, this is a once-in-a-lifetime, this is generational, this is transformative, all of those different things that we promised to the public, and in order to do that, we have to have a strategy. If we take a proposal-by-proposal approach, that's not strategy, we're just spending. So we're trying to take the time to invest, and I recognize that it's frustrating to many organizations who have applied for funding. I recognize that it's frustrating to council members who are also getting questions from these organizations about the status of applications and things of that nature. I completely and wholeheartedly understand that. But in this position, if I just were to go with the proposal-by-proposal approach, that is not strategy, that is not investment. And those are all of the things that we promised that we would do. We would make this a once-in-a-lifetime, a generational, a transformative, all the things that this, that this body and our mayor has promised, we're trying to execute on that. And strategy takes time. And I recognize, again, that there are a lot of organizations that are frustrated and are hurting still as a part of this process, and we are trying to make those decisions as quickly as possible.
Yeah, so I, you know, I fully agree with you. I mean, I'm on, I'm on the exact same wavelength as you. I guess the issue and the reason why this has come up in every hearing, and will probably continue to come up in every single hearing, is because there, the process in which you outlined makes perfect sense. When, but everything that you're saying that we're trying to avoid happening, we now have a second tract where there are grants that are going out the door quickly that obviously are not, you know, following the exact same process because if they were, it would take as much time as the other stuff. And so even though they're focused, I mean, there are grants that are going out the door very quickly. There's tens of millions of dollars which are already out there from other, a separate tract. And so that's really where the concern is and has been from the beginning. And so all the things you're outlining is concerns that are, that are ongoing, that still remain unanswered, is how are we ensuring that, that those mistakes or those, you know, those issues are not occurring from these other entities that are handing out, handing out monies?
Those directors are present, you can also ask them those questions. But we've identified that there is a application process for those nonprofits. There is a risk assessment for those nonprofits. There is a review process for those nonprofits. So I don't know that I necessarily agree that there is a different tract. I will agree that some of our agencies have been able to make decisions a bit more, a bit more quickly than, than the Recovery Office. But I again reiterate that those grants are for very specific purposes and that those directors understand who those organizations are that they would like to partner with. They either have prior experience with them and/or through their review process have decided that those are organizations that they want to partner with. But I, you know, I don't want to speak for agency directors who are present, they can do that themselves. But I don't know that I, that I agree that there is a separate track, although I will agree that it has been faster.
Okay, so that's very, that's a very fair response, and I appreciate that. So I'll ask directly, so I don't see representatives from all these entities here, but I guess Monsi's here? Good morning, so I'll ask that. So you guys have now issued just under 18 million dollars worth of grants, correct? So you guys have now issued just under $18 million worth of grants, correct? So we've heard the word nonprofit said here at least two dozen times in regards to this. Is every single entity that you guys have given money to, 100% of them nonprofits?
100% of them are not nonprofits, but to speak to your question before about strategy, one of the differentiating points that can be made about MONC is that MONC is responsible for a strategy, the mayor's comprehensive violence prevention strategy. And so in that way, we already understand fully what the strategic approach is going to be and has been associated with the dollars that we've been granting.
So part of that, just under $18 million, you're saying that some of that money went to entities that are not nonprofits. So did any of them go, and I know, you know, a large chunk of it was to a government entity, which I understand that, but what expenditures that you guys have given out of the $18 million went to for-profit entities?
I want to talk specifically about the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services because our contract that we are negotiating with them is for $12,690. I want to be really clear in saying that the monies are not for the benefit of DPSES. All of the dollars that have been allocated as a part of this contract go directly to folks who are either incarcerated individuals or who are returning back to citizenry as we speak. So this is directly to folks, a portion of it being set-asides for folks who need dollars from a commissary perspective, and then the other more significant portion of those dollars being allocated post-release for them as they connect to our employment services with the mayor's Office of Employment Development. So I want to be really clear there and to answer the other part of your question. Sage Wellness is specifically listed here with an award of $750,000. This award was made with this professional services agency because there is a pre-existing relationship between this professional services provider associated with mental health supports, specifically in the space of gun violence and gun violence intervention.
Okay, so...
I am not aware of there being any other, of the 23 awards that we've made to date not being made to a nonprofit or a fiscally-sponsored organization.
Okay, so I have no question on the $12 million one. I, no problem with that one whatsoever. I looked into that and it actually looks like a good use of funds. So this Sage Wellness, if it's, so this is a for-profit business?
I believe that Sage Wellness is a limited liability corporation, yes.
So, okay, so it's a business and you said there's pre-existing relationships. Who are those relationships with?
When I say pre-existing relationships, I mean that the mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, the predecessor agency to the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, had entered into a contract with Sage Wellness before to provide very similar services. And so they are known for their professional services offering.
So this is a, so it's a contract with a private business? Not a grant towards, to a nonprofit?
Yes, I think we're saying the same thing.
So when we, when we, and I don't know this Sage Wellness, I don't know who they are, I don't know all the services that they provide, but if they're a for-profit entity, they're a business, so obviously there's different disclosures that a nonprofit versus a for-profit has to do. One of the, also the big differentiating factors, in my opinion, as far as the money going to nonprofits, nonprofits that are set up and the design is to provide services and therefore, you know, the government recognizes that they are providing needed services to people and therefore they have certain protections and benefits such as they don't have to pay taxes. So a business that does have to pay taxes, there's money coming off the top, there's taxes coming off the top, there's other factors that they have, and there's also less transparency. When it comes to a nonprofit, they have to follow 990, the 990 is published online on the IRS website. A for-profit business can essentially do whatever they want. I mean, they could literally take money and buy whatever they'd like to buy and they don't really answer to anybody and they don't have to disclose anything, they don't have to show anything. And if, you know, people disagree with, you know, how they do it, they, you know, different options, they can just declare bankruptcy if they wanted and take the money or they could, there's a whole variety of things they can do. So why, why would we, I mean, I've heard the word nonprofit nonstop, so are for-profit, our businesses that provide services, were they allowed to apply for ARPA funding, like for the, for these grants that we were giving? Like are, on the list that you guys sent around, and I appreciate you guys sorting through countless applications, are any businesses on that list?
Not to my knowledge, they're nonprofit organizations.
So why on this second track do we have businesses getting $750,000 gifts from this federal money? And it might be the best business in the world, I don't know, but I'm just saying like, there's a differentiation here between nonprofit and for-profit. We have a lot of money going to nonprofits. Why are we spending $750,000 giving it to a business that doesn't have the same level of transparency as nonprofits have to follow?
If I can.
Sure.
Our obligation, and this is one of the important reasons why, one of the reasons why it's important to draw a distinction between local operating dollars and federal funds. ARPA dollars are under very clear restrictions. Our obligations around reporting on those dollars are also very clear. So, and we are, regardless of who the provider of service will be, whether it's a for-profit, nonprofit, community-based organization, their standards for reporting back how they use funds will not change. So I want to be clear that for our purposes and certainly for the purposes of MONC, the mayor's charge is clear, they are working that charge in a phenomenal way, and the obligation that they have and providers have to report back on the use of funds is the same. So I don't, councilman, draw a distinction between a for-profit, community-based, or nonprofit organization if their mission is, and their work aligns with ours.
So, I mean, I do draw a distinction. First, I have full confidence that Ms. Carney is going to make sure that we're in full compliance. So my question wasn't, you know, regarding, is this money compliant with the federal things? I'm confident that you guys have that under control. I, when I saw the grants come out, I sent an email to MONC and I asked, are, is, are you guys only issuing grants to nonprofits? Is every group on this list nonprofits? I got an email response that the answer is yes. All of them are nonprofits. So I guess my question is, were you guys aware that this one entity was a for-profit when you issued, when you issued that gift?
So councilman, I do recall you getting an initial response of the answer being yes and then a corrected response, given a further look at the list. It's important to differentiate between those applicants that are applying via our grant portal where we are absolutely requiring that folks either be fiscally sponsored or be a 501(c)(3) themselves. When compared to, and then looking at the initial email that was sent out to council members back earlier this year, where MONC made some direct selections. Direct selections are no different than how we see other city funds get expended when we know that there's a professional service that is being offered by a company that is reputable and for the benefit of Baltimore City. I want to be really clear in saying that the scope of work that Sage Wellness will deliver to, the metrics, the performance metrics that Sage Wellness is being held accountable to are absolutely in alignment with all of the metrics and the scope of work associated with the community violence prevention strategy.
How do we know that this, well first, I mean, I guess it does stand out that there's one business whereas everything else we're talking about is all nonprofits. And every hearing, I mean, we can go back and play the tapes, at every point in time we were told all these grants were going to be going to nonprofits. So how could we be sure? I mean, there, it's not, well, right off the bat, some of the money is coming off the top, meaning businesses have expenses that nonprofits don't have. And so right off the bat, that $750,000 would not go as far as $750,000 to a nonprofit that provides the exact same services that they provide or similar services that they provide. So right off the top, we're, you know, we're losing some of that money. So, but what I guess I'm hearing from you is that they didn't go through the applica, they didn't apply the Sage Wellness, they didn't apply, you just hand-selected them. Is that correct?
As I mentioned before, we had a previous relationship with Sage Wellness specifically, who has delivered a high quality of service associated with providing mental health supports to Baltimoreans all across this city as they deal with and face gun violence.
Okay, so I guess my request and then I'll wrap up is, if we can just, if you can provide to the council the reports from previous contracts that they've had with the city and, you know, the metrics and final reports that they've issued on those grants so that the committee can review them.
Councilman, what was the name of the entity again?
Sage Wellness.
Safe Wellness?
Sage Wellness, thanks.
Chairman, may I also just, I want to make a comment about the off-the-top remark, which is again, that the American Rescue Plan Act calls for a cap on the amount of administrative costs that an organization can spend. That is regardless of whether it is for-profit, nonprofit, city agency, whomever, there is a cap on that amount. So I don't want the public or anyone else in this room to believe that there is an amount that a for-profit business can take that is more than what a nonprofit can take. It is capped per the law.
So when you say administrative, that there's administrative costs, but then some of the actual costs to perform the services, a lot of those costs across the board and most entities, most nonprofits, is human capital, right? Is the cost from, you know, the employees and such, is that correct?
In some cases, but in some cases, I don't know.
So the general rule of thumb, and I think we all experienced this, is that if you work for government or you work for a nonprofit, you're typically making less, not in every scenario, but you're typically making less than you are in the private sector. So, you know, somebody who's providing counseling services in a nonprofit is making, is typically making less than somebody who's providing the same counseling services for profit where there isn't that same level of transparency where, you know, it shows up on reports, hey, why is this, you know, social worker making this much money here? You know, and nonprofit social workers are making a third of that.
Is this an argument to pay city employees more?
No, my argument, my argument is that there's costs, the costs are different in for-profit versus nonprofit, and I don't think that that's something that can be disputed. And in for-profit companies, there's a reason why they don't have the benefits that nonprofits have. And so nonprofits, you typically, you know, you typically see that when your money goes to a specific cause in a nonprofit, it typically gets further than a for-profit providing those same services.
You win.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna wrap this conversation up. We can, we can come back to this at the end and continue the conversation offline. I'm gonna go to...
But the request is in though, right?
We have the request, councilman.
Okay, thank you.
The request is reports of the performance of Sage Wellness with either MONC or its predecessor entity, MOCJ, demonstrating, I think, the nature of that previous relationship and as the director for MONC explained it, the quote, "good work" that that entity has performed for the city, right? Anyone in disagreement on that request or need clarification? Okay, all right, very good. Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my statement and conversation kind of piggybacks on the councilman of the fifth district's conversation and just kind of listening, I guess I'll start off by saying, recovery for council members really is a little different from, I guess, the decisions and how this setup was done, not just for nonprofits, but decide, making decisions on what agencies really should have taken the forefront on here, looking, and I'm looking at page nine as well. And when I first looked at that page, I, you know, I'm like, where is housing? Where is the Office of Family and Children's Success? Where, you know, where are the CAP centers? How are, who's, you know, from this list, how is this recover, because they are, they're part of recovery too.
So if I could...
I'd like to finish first and then, you know, you can chime in. But my statements are just, are kind of geared to, we're not the experts in this, but we are the folks that are on the ground and are working with nonprofits that are citywide, nonprofits that are within each of our districts, and that's recovery. And somehow, when this first started, the nonprofits, a lot of them are confused because there's nonprofits that have been doing just very hard work. They get the advertisement, they fill in the applications. Some really good nonprofits have been denied, but they haven't had a chance to meet and express themselves and have that back-and-forth communication. There's been a void there and it's been kind of left up to us to explain things to them when we are somewhat confused with the process as well. And, you know, not pointing any fingers and how this decision thing has all happened, but we have been constantly doing things like putting in, trying to put in legislation that can help with some of the decision-making because our city is in disarray and we're having serious emergency problems. We, you know, all, all of this is related, you know, the violence piece, the, it's just we want to make, and we also want to make sure that as this money is distributed, it's helping along the path continuously, even when it's gone. Because we are, we're being watched with everything we do. And I feel like as a representative, not just on the council, but in my community, that we haven't been a part of this. And I, not, again, not blaming anyone, there's, there's just been, there's some communication flaws, there's just some things that have not been working well, and I'm sure all of our questions are going to be focused towards that. So you can, I'd like you to comment.
Sure, happy to address. One of the comments that I want to make is that there are probably, there's a handful of individuals that have reached out to me individually about engagement and about the process. I'm available to any council member that has questions, wants to meet, wants to brief, I'm available to anyone. And there's a few that have availed themselves of that opportunity and happy to do so. Every time there is an announcement, we make effort to engage council as well with providing information prior to anything public. We have tried to do that as well and in some cases, we've done well and in others, we haven't. And so, but we still would like the opportunity to engage and welcome the opportunity to engage. Most of the time, the, I'm usually asked very question, very pointed questions about one thing, but if there is engagement, if there's conversations about strategy, happy to have them, happy to have them. I have not drawn a line between the administration and the council. And so I'm happy to engage with anyone that wants to engage with me, happy to do so and have additional conversations. So I want to start off there. With regard to some of the agencies that are not represented in this slide deck, that is because this is solely focused on the treasury report and obligations and expenditures as of the period of performance. And so for DHCD, although we made a public announcement, we have not awarded any funding to them in fiscal year '22, we're still working through that. So that is why you will not see that reflected in this report. For other agencies, we're still having conversations about any additional agencies that may receive ARPA funding. And so although there have been a number of announcements that have already been made, it doesn't mean that those are the only ones that are going to be made. As I talked about in the beginning, this is a strategy. And so to have those conversations, we have to have our conversations with directors, with our senior leadership team, with you all, to make sure that we're making sound decisions about how we are using ARPA to invest and not just spend. So because they're not reflected, doesn't mean that there are ongoing conversations about some of those agencies that you haven't yet heard about. conversations about some of those agencies that you haven't yet heard about. We're still having conversations, so I want to make sure that I address that. And also, yes, we're being, we're being watched. I'm very cognizant of that, and one of the things that I've talked about in this hearing is that I recognize and understand that in this position, there are a lot of eyes, because there is a lot of disbelief about our ability to be able to execute this funding, to implement it, and to really make a difference. And so I take that challenge on wholeheartedly. So that's why some of the decisions that we're making, while they might be slow, they're deliberative. Because we do want to be able to show that we didn't just spend money, that we invested, and that we're focused on making, on changing outcomes for individuals in the city. But I've also tempered that by saying to you all in every hearing that we have, that $641 million is not enough money to change the city. The city has a lot of need. It is literally like being in an airplane where you have to put your mask on first. We have to put our mask on first before we even can do anything for some of these nonprofit organizations that you all are very passionate about funding. We have a lot of agencies that are under-resourced, underfunded, and really need assistance. And so we don't want to always have to be in the position where we're relying on our nonprofit community to step in, where city agency hasn't been able to do so. So this is an opportunity for us to think about that, to think about how we change and make that paradigm shift, so that we don't find ourselves always in situations where we have to rely on someone else to help us provide the services that our residents deserve and that we're supposed to provide to them. So I also just wanted to make that comment as well. I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted me to address, but I'm happy to do so, if you had another question.
I'll stop there.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I will say you've always been responsive to me, for what that's worth. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am looking at page nine and looking at your total obligation, your total expenditures. And we know hunger breeds violence in the city. We know people are going to do what they have to do in terms of making sure they eat. So I'm looking at the food insecurity funding, $2,302,000. And then it's over at total expenditure zero. For the last two years, I have a crew that goes to a lot of our senior housing to make sure they have food. We don't stand on a corner and got a sign that says free boxes. We have a list of people, and have a crew to go out Tuesdays and Thursdays. So from my understanding, a lot of that money has been cut, because now the food that we give out on Tuesdays, is no more food. The food now we give out on Thursdays is very scarce. So my question is, is this ARPA money or the general fund, somebody are going to put some money back into this food, this food insecurity funding? Because the food insecurity didn't start when COVID came here. The food insecurity been here. This is nothing new. And from my understanding, a lot of that money has been cut. What is going to happen? Are we going to go back and put some more money into this food insecurity funding? Because again, we know we have a lot of violence in this city, but when you put people in a position where they're hungry, that puts them in another position, and I'm sure everybody here don't want to see that happen. So will we just additional money add to this food, this funding? And the other piece is, I have Broadway East Sixth Community Association I work with. My question is, why are we giving money to Hopkins for the people to go pick the food up and distribute it, when you can give it to communities like I have, who do it two days a week, and doing it for two years, and we go to senior buildings, seven community associations we go to to make sure those seniors knock on the door, make sure they got their food. And now it's being cut. So my question is, I hope money is going to be put back into the food insecurity funding, and why are we not letting the communities who do the work, nothing gets Hopkins, the communities doing the work, that they got to go to another location and pick up food two days, got to rent a van to put the food in, unload the food, go to people's houses? It's just, to me, it doesn't make sense. So my question is, I hope we put more money into this food insecurity funding, and why can't we let organizations that already have assigned houses of seniors, of people that are hungry, let them have the food dropped off to that organization? Instead, I gotta get Broadway East to pay for a van every week, two days a week, to go pick the food up, load the food up, and then distribute the food. So maybe you can help me with that.
So let me address the ARPA part of the question, because some of that is separate and aside from what I understand. First of all, there's a $11 million investment into food insecurity for the duration of ARPA. What you see on slide nine is a $2.3 million. That represents the amount of funding that was available for food insecurity for fiscal year '22, and that is specific to the Department of Planning. That is not, that does not include the amount of funding that BCHD has for funding for food insecurity. The reason why you see no expenditures is because there has been FEMA reimbursement up until this point. So there was no reason to expend any of the ARPA funds while this was still available to be reimbursed via FEMA. Now FEMA has recently cut their reimbursement as of March, and so we are working with planning and with the Health Department to quickly move to make sure that there is not a gap in service for any individuals that are receiving any food or produce boxes. But the reason why you see a zero expenditure is because up until this point, that was completely reimbursable by FEMA.
So my question is, and this came from planning, that they actually have already cut the food funding. It's already cut. So my question is, what you're saying probably is true, but planners are saying something different. So I'm trying to get a clear understanding, because the cutting, the cutting has happened, because now you go from two days to one day to this little teeny box on Thursday. So some places, they don't get no food. Some places just totally cut their funding, the food off to a lot of community association.
So April 26 was when the Department of Planning was notified that FEMA would abruptly end their 100% reimbursement, and the last day of distribution was--
Director, sorry, you said April 26 was when FEMA was, or when planning was in--
Was notified by FEMA that they were cutting--
Got it, got it.
--their reimbursement.
Go ahead, sorry.
So the last day of distribution was May the 7th. We are working with planning to move quickly through an emergency procurement, so that we can try to continue to use the nonprofit entity that they are already partnering with to continue those services. We have to work through our bureaucratic processes in order to get that funding available, but we are working on that actively.
And my last question is for city administrator, short. Broadway East has a nonprofit. Why can't they have their food delivered straight to them? Because it's right in the community, because it's costing them money to keep going, get a van two days a week, every week for the last two years. And that comes out of their own community association profit. So my question is, why can't that organization who have over, oh my God, whole communities, Broadway East, South Clifton Park, Dolly Park, Oliver, all those organizations, community that I work with, we have houses that we go right to for our seniors, some of them senior builders. Why can't they now, Broadway East, just use example, because they've been doing it for two years, and we have a crew, why can't they just have that food delivered to them at a location? So that cuts back on them, got to buy, rent a van two days a week, every week. They doing the work. It don't make sense. They got to spend extra money to get a van to go pick up the food, when they can pick a location where they can have the food distributed, and a lot of the seniors in the community can come and get the food themselves. That cuts back on their spending money, gas, the van, two days a week. Why can't we let our nonprofits do what they're doing to work?
Very much appreciate that question, Councilman. I assume that planning is administering that program? Yes. So I'm happy to talk with planning to make sure that I understand their rationale for spending in the way that they do, and how to activate a more sensitive program.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Ramos, in a second. I have one follow-up question directly related to Councilman Stokes. What is the, you mentioned for food insecurity, $11 million total in the announcement, i.e. commitment, in the original commitment?
That was, that's the amount of the Department of Planning. That is a separate amount from what BCHD has for--
And that's the multi-year for planning?
That's correct.
Okay. And how much is BCHD getting for--
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we'll follow up.
Okay. I don't know that it's relevant, but for the sake of this question, I don't know that it's terribly, terribly relevant, other than to say it's likely more than $11 million, right? The amount that health is getting?
Not, not specific to food insecurity, I don't believe so, but let us verify.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fine. So what's the, what is the money going to planning for? Is planning doing food distribution? Or I guess I got kind of sidetracked.
So for, for planning, to cover the boxes for distribution, as soon as we're able to restart that, it would be approximately 2,000 food boxes per week. And--
It's actual food and the logistics behind it?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not like-- Yeah, or like--
No.
--planning activities, it's actual--
Yes.
--logistical operations, including the food. Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you. Just one follow-up question to that, and then I have my other questions. So Director, thank you for your time today. You had said that FEMA gave us the notice literally a couple weeks ago, right?
Mm-hmm.
And there was no indication prior to that, so that the, so that the department and your office could actually kind of work through that? There was no indication at all?
No. When I had a conversation with BCHD and the Department of Planning, it was really like a very abrupt email that was, we just received notification from FEMA that they're going to cut reimbursement. We need to put a plan in place to be able to ensure that we don't have a stoppage in coverage. But again, the timeframe notification was April the 26th, and it stopped on May 7th. So we really didn't have very much time to try to work through emergency procurement and things of that nature. So we've been having conversations with planning to try to figure out how we can quickly move through this, to try to restart produce box distribution as soon as we can.
Yeah, it was super critical. In my district, I have two locations, and, you know, it was a, it was something that brought the community together to help each other, but also really for people who, so I'm glad to hear that you're working to get it restarted. Hopefully, we can do that quickly, and certainly let us know. In relation to that as well, did other FEMA reimbursement type of services get the same notice? For instance, you know, MOCF, the home services, right? So a lot of what has been going on with emergency shelter was all FEMA reimbursed. And we were anticipating, kind of throughout the process, that they would be cutting that down 25%, et cetera, et cetera. Did they get the same notice? Or that's still being reimbursed at a certain percentage?
It's still being reimbursed at a certain percentage, but because they've already started to step down, we're anticipating that they're going to continue to step down. And so we're working to try to make sure that we're able to address that, if and when they just stop completely.
Right, I mean, they've been very clear with us. They're planning on stepping down--
That's right.
--and have gone through the process with us as to how they were going to change the strategy based on that. So that's why I was concerned and confused as to why this food piece was done differently. That's all.
Yeah, and I wish I could answer that question, but I know that planning and BCHD were very caught off guard about the abrupt end. And there's even been national reports about that as well, so it's not that Baltimore just wasn't--
No, for sure, right. It sounds like that was, yeah. So my other question was, one thing that came up in our Water for All hearing the other day was the idea of, so there's a section of the program that allows for renters to apply, even though they don't, they're not the property owners, so the account is not attached to them, but they can apply to get credits if, only if they pay the water bill separately from the rent, okay? What has been worked out is that then the renter would get a prepaid card with the discount, so that they can pay for the water bill that way. The challenge is that that amount has then been designated as income and could potentially mess up somebody's, you know, benefits or anything else, correct? So I understand that had been worked out for the guaranteed income, but can we use, we've been under the impression, the advocates have told me, that we could use ARPA dollars to pay for that program, in which case it would not then be considered income. And DPW at our hearing did say that they would look into this for us. So I don't know if you've had any other conversations about that. Given that now we have this $50 million that we didn't expect was going to be available because of the revenue stabilization money, it's not going to cost $50 million. It might be a million-dollar expenditure, given who's applied, but can we look into that and work through it, if that's even a possibility? Because we certainly don't want people's benefits and stuff to be messed up. If it's, it's not even, it may even be, you know, a couple hundred dollars a month that could really mess things, you know what I mean?
Certainly, we can, we can look into it. This is the first I'm hearing about it, so we'll work with DPW and with our folks that have been working on guaranteed income pilot to see what we can do.
Right, well, this is for Water for All, so--
Right, right.
Yeah.
That means the conversation about benefits.
Go over that request again, for our records.
Yes, okay, thank you. So it would be to examine whether ARPA money can be used to pay for the renters' portion of the discount for Water for All.
Thank you.
And we had this hearing, you know, it's all running together.
It was the last week?
It was last week. It was last week.
It's not a day that ends in a Y.
Right. And I can, you know, send you more information about that, but yeah, that's the, that's the request. And then my last question is around the stabilization money that now we have an additional $50 million. What is the thinking about how that's going to be used? There are obviously many needs in the city, and there's lots of opportunity for how that can be used, is the thinking? And I understand from your previous answer that you're, it's in the beginning stages of people thinking about it, but do you think that's going to be used for more of the nonprofits? Would it be, you know, to fulfill the obligation that the mayor said for, you know, our vacant properties at $50 million a year? What, what is that looking like?
I don't want to get out in front of the mayor and the city administrator on this. I mean, so other than the fact that we know that we will use it for projects, we haven't gotten beyond that. Certainly, there is conversations about our vacant strategy. Certainly, there's conversations about nonprofits. Certainly, because we haven't made any awards yet to those that have applied directly to us. There's conversations about our libraries, there's conversations about, you know, many things that we know are still challenges that we haven't yet addressed through current allocations. And so I don't want to be presumptive and mislead anyone, but certainly we are thinking about the same things that you're thinking about, that we know our needs in the community, and that we know people are waiting to be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Ramos, I was just coming back into chambers on your previous point. Was that a request for information?
It was a request to work with DPW on this issue of whether we could use ARPA money for the renter portion of the Water for All program, so that it would not be counted as income?
So was your expectation that we receive a response back?
An update, yeah. Because DPW at that hearing committed to us that they would look into this as well. So I just wanted to mention it here, make sure that we were--
So frame that for me once more?
Certainly.
And summarize it in one sentence for me, please.
Sure. The request is to get an update on if we can use ARPA money to pay for the renter discount that is, you know, being paid for through Water for All, so that is not considered income. So when the discount that's done through the homeowners is not considered income, it never has been, because it's coming from, it just never has been. But because we are giving the renters a prepaid card with that discount, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Then it is considered income, and the city has to send out 1099s and all of that. It was my understanding that ARPA money, if it's used to pay for that, 1099s wouldn't have to be done, it wouldn't be considered income. But I just need to, we just need to, DPW committed to figuring this out, and I just wanted to mention it here.
Got it. Perfect, thank you. Councilman Burnett, you've been remarkably quiet. Do you have any questions? Councilman Burnett, you've been remarkably quiet, do you have any questions?
Uh, I will be reiterating several points that have already been made, so I'm gonna pass.
Thank you.
Chairman, you, you had asked a question about the amount of funding that was available to, for food insecurity for BCHD, and I wanted to, I have a response for that.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Um, over four years, it's about 16 million dollars, so you were right, it's over 11.
Okay, ju-
That's in addition to the 11?
Yes, but remember, there, uh, there's a different target population. So planning generally serves kind of our underserved community, where, um, BCHD normally serves seniors.
Got it.
That was my next question. So I just need a second to think about my other one. Maybe there's a good reason to keep those separated among agencies, maybe there isn't. Was there any thought that went into that, and?
Well, as far as I know, and, and I'm still fairly new to the city, but as far as I know, those were always, um, independent, um, efforts, yes. Through the different departments now, should, could there be a conversation about housing that all in one place? Certainly, there could be, but I think that's probably a discussion that's even larger than ARPA.
Yeah, not, so I'm, uh, direct it to the city administrator. Yeah, 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 um, I always go back to the, I always go back to the mowing grass example. We have six city agencies that mow grass in the city, although I will point out that Wreckin' Parks has been remarkably efficient, uh, this mowing season. Totally unrelated to any of this, um, there's 11 million going to, uh, Department of Planning, multi-year money to support food distribution to, uh, low-income individuals. There is 16 million going to Health Department to support food distribution to senior citizens. Maybe there's a good reason, maybe there's not, I'm, I'm indifferent, I'm just curious. Is there a, uh, reason why that's not all combined and kinda like one function to leverage economies of scale and, and like the logistics of the operation?
Yes, uh, the Health Department has very strong relationships with the senior community and senior community partners. Uh, that is, they say organizations and stakeholders that have ties into, uh, uh, senior centers that work with the senior community, that same relationship base does not exist at planning. Um, so yes, there are very strong reasons why health would take a very strong role with the senior community in terms of providing meals, and, uh, why planning would do logistics in terms of, especially during the recovery period, uh, providing boxed, uh, meals for other vulnerable populations.
I guess then, does it, again, don't have an opinion here, does it make sense then for all that operation to be run out of health? So the, the part that planning's currently doing in terms of low-income families?
Actually, this does relate to mowing, uh, because we were here with all of you and talked a bit about this. I don't, in some cases, I do understand the, um, the, uh, the assumption that one city agency managing across, uh, the enterprise, one function, could be more efficient. But when it comes to providing services, especially to vulnerable populations, efficiency, uh, doesn't al- isn't always the only priority. And so, uh, when it, I am happy to have health and to have planning separately speak to how their programs are run, but I don't wanna today make the assumption that, uh, it should be run by one agency. Um, so I'm happy to follow up, uh, after I get feedback from the both of them.
Mr. Chair, can I add a second there? I, my understanding is that planning has a food insecurity program.
They do.
Not just with boxes, but they've been doing this planning work for a few years now to, to try to plan around making sure we don't have food deserts.
They do.
So that's where this is coming from, right? So that they had asked for this during COVID to continue during that, uh, that work with communities that had asked for it. And so that's kinda where it comes from, right? Am I right on that?
Uh, yes, there's a, a lot of work, policy-related work, of course, being done in planning related to grocers, uh, food markets, food distribution, um, meeting the needs of vulnerable populations. They were certainly best positioned to provide expertise when it came to the recovery period on where food distribution would be most beneficial and impactful. That does not immediately qualify them to help provide that same programming to seniors, um, where I would even say health's history is just as long in terms of their service, uh, in ser- senior service centers and with the senior community. Um, so again, I'm happy to have health speak to that, uh, and to have planning separately speak to their policy, uh, their policy work.
I don't know, it's necessary, I'm just curious. I'm, it's, it's helpful, and thank you for the context, Councilwoman. Um, I, I may follow up, but I, I don't need any follow-up right now, so thanks for, thank you for explaining that. Regarding, uh, regarding MONC, um, so on, on slide nine, we, we have the 10.3 million dollars in, in obligations, about $75,000 in expenditures. Um, you know, it appears that the, the work that MONC is being tasked with by the mayor is critically important work, um, especially in the, the larger discussion around public safety. So there is certainly a sense of urgency there, um, that I think we would all agree with. Can you, can you help walk me through, um, how that translates in terms of the amount that's been obligated versus the amount that's been expended? And what's being done to ramp up that spending in a manner that's consistent with, with that level of urgency? Slide nine, yep. And we have the, um, DGS jackhammering, or rather, the Angle Sander is the lady from, uh, Chap Appleby pointed out the other day, so please get a little close to the mic.
Before Director Jackson, um, gives an explanation of what MONC is using the money for, I wanna make sure that I, I make some distinction because I had to follow back up with the team about the difference between slides nine and 10. So slide nine is the fiscal year obligation amount. Slide 10 is the total committed amount, and it spans multiple fiscal years. Um, so slide nine is the amount for the current fiscal year. So I just wanted to make sure that, I, I know we had some discussion about that earlier, and I probably didn't explain that distinction well, so I just wanted to follow up with that before Director Jackson provided her response.
And Director, before you go, let, let me just do one last summary of the terms, just so we're all on the same page. So on slide nine, um, 10.3 million represents the amount obligated to MONC for the current fiscal year, starting July 31st up until April 30th, right?
No.
June 30th. Yeah, the fiscal year, so the fiscal year for us is-
The entire fiscal year?
The entire fiscal year.
Okay, I was just going off of-
It says through April 30th, that is the cutoff date for the period of performance for the report.
For Treasury.
And that is what we have reported to Treasury, is their entire obligated amount for the fiscal year.
So on July 31st, when we submit our next quarterly report to Treasury, the amount obligated to MONC for fiscal year 22 will be 10,302, 367, and 75 cents?
Plus whatever we are awarding to them for fiscal year 23. So, so the, so the commitment to MONC is 50 million dollars over, I think it's three or four fiscal years, I forget. Then there's a specific amount-
50 million, 300,000.
For, yes.
For three years.
Yes, thank you. So for fiscal year 22, 23, and 24, there is an amount that is obligated for each of those fiscal years. What we reported in this report is what we've obligated for fiscal year 22. So using your example for our next report in July, we will have obligated our FY '23 funding to them as well.
Okay, got it, got it, all right, let me just interrupt real quick. So on, we're gonna submit quarterly ports, quarterly reports on July 31st, October 31st, January 31st of '23, and April 30th of '23. The next four quarterly reports that we submit to Treasury will have an amount that is the same, and that amount will be equal to the 10,302 dot-dot-dot number, plus the sum of total funds obligated to MONC for fiscal year 23. So we'll report the same number obligated for MONC in each of the next four quarterly reports, because that number will be total obligated since the inception of ARPA, which, right?
Yes.
Got it, okay. And then, 75,501 dollars, that figure on slide nine represents the amount of that 10.3 million that MONC has expended to date out of fiscal year 22 funds, right, that have been obligated.
As of the date that, uh, the period of performance that we reported, yes.
As of April 30th, okay. And then, why don't we, why don't we come back to the 17.6 million, so I don't confuse things?
Okay.
For you, and more importantly, for myself, on page 10. So, back to my original question, um, around the sense of urgency. Can you help walk me through where we're, where we're at and where we're going, please?
Yes, so setting aside the 17.6 million that, uh, we awarded in the first quarter, I'll, I'll talk you all through the allocation of the funding, um, for this fiscal year. Specifically, about 5.8 million dollars is allocated toward the administration of the office. Much of that has to do with the staffing of the office. And so after the BOE approval in November, MONC had 18 positions that it needed to account for, um, hiring for in this fiscal year. And to date, we've hired 16 of those 18 folks, and we anticipate, um, having the other two hires made very shortly. And so, um, that portion of the allocation should be accounted for by the end of this fiscal year. Um, with regard to, um, the allocation specific to neighborhoods, for, uh, the fiscal year, we allocated 725,000 dollars. And to date, we have awarded 275,000 of those dollars. Um, we are in the contract negotiation process for many of these grants. Uh, in fact, ROR is on the BOE agenda for Wednesday, and I believe that during the period that Director Kearney spoke of back on March 16th, the University of Baltimore's contract was awarded. And so we have many community-based organizations who are in the queue for, um, getting contracts executed this fiscal year. For the reentry work, again, um, a total allocation of about 18.6 million across three years this year, 2.9 million of it, and that actively being worked on with regard to contract negotiation with the Department of, um, Public Safety and Corrections, along with other smaller community-based organizations that we have allocated reentry dollars for. Um, and the same can be said for our youth and trauma work, our victim services work, and for our gun violence work. The sense of urgency is one that is high, um, and the team is working as quickly as possible with regard to, uh, negotiating scope of work, performance metrics, um, and budgetary breakouts with our community-based organizations so that we can get those contracts to BOE for approval expeditiously.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and what was the first figure again for the 18 employees, or the 16 of 18?
The total cost over three years is 5.8 million dollars for administration. That's not just for, um, our staffing, but other components of, of administratively handling the work. For fiscal year 22, the breakdown is about 1.2 million dollars for administration.
Okay, so this is where I, I get confused, um, in, in terms of the reporting, and I'm sure there's a, a good explanation behind this. So we have 16 of, of those 18 positions are, are currently filled, right? Which means those folks are collecting a, a paycheck, where the city's paying them. Why is that not, um, that, that's money that's been expended? Like, we've, we've actually spent that, that money. And I guess my, my question is, why isn't that showing up in, in the expenditures? Does that, does that make sense what I'm asking? Like, we, we s-
Are, you're asking why are hires not included in the expenditures?
Y- yeah, okay, so, let me try and ask it a different way. So, so there's 10.3 in total obligations that the city of Baltimore is using ARPA funds that, that have been transferred over to, to MONC's account, 10.3 million dollars. Out of that 10.3 million, MONC is using 1.2 million for administration and, and human resources, if you will, right? They've likely spent a large percentage of that 1.2 million dollars, which means that money is expended, but that money doesn't show up in the total expenditures.
So there's, and I'm probably gonna have to follow up with you on this one because there's a lengthy explanation that we went through with our consultants about how we determine if salaries are considered obligations or expenditures and when. And so I don't wanna misrepresent that, but there is, there is a conversation that we had with our consultants about how to report that. If you'll allow, I'd like to provide that to you in writing, so that I can make sure that I accurately reflect that. But this was a question that we had, um, with our consultants as well, about how to accurately account for, um, for salaries, um, in our reporting. In addition to that, we did have some challenges, um, and I, and I mentioned that before, with, um, account numbers and things being, um, not being charged correctly. So some of that you may not see until that reconciliation has been made.
Okay, very good. And the, um, the consultant, that's, we're, we're solely using Ernst &amp; Young?
No, Ernst &amp; Young is being used for CARES Act, uh, for ARPA, we're using Guide House.
Who?
Guide House.
Like, G-U-I-D-E?
That's correct.
All one word?
Yes, that's correct.
And the, the funds, um, being used to pay Guide House are coming out of that 11 million dollar multi-year bucket for the administration of the office?
That is correct.
Got it, okay. Um, so Director Jackson, going, going back to you, so you mentioned, um, uh, a, a bucket within that 10.3 million of 725,000 dollars for, I think you characterized it as, as neighborhood work, and indicated that 275,000 of that has been expended already? And I'm, I'm curious why that figure isn't reflected in the total expenditures, which is listed at 75,000?
Had been awarded already. As of 3/16/2022, of that total amount, um, only 100,000 dollars had been approved by the Board of Estimates at that time, and that was for the University of Baltimore. Um, the other 125,000 dollars involve community-based organizations that we're currently negotiating contracts with.
So 100 for UMB, ROR, and then 125, so 225 total?
Listed in neighborhoods is just University of Baltimore, so the Baltimore Neighborhood Indicators Alliance.
Yeah, NIA.
Yes, BENYA, um, for neighborhoods. The ROR allocation is a part of our Community Violence Intervention allocation, but that is going to BOE.
Okay.
It's today, Wednesday?
Uh, today's Tuesday.
Right, tomorrow.
So the, the first piece that was awarded was UBBNIA, right? And that was in the amount of 100,000 dollars?
So for neighborhoods, uh, specifically in our budgetary breakdown, we have issued awards to University of Baltimore, um, as indicated in the email sent out to the council earlier this year. Um, for neighborhood capacity assessment, we'd also issued a multi-year award to three other organizations, ROKA, Ceasefire, and We Are Us for 75,000 dollars across a three-year period. Those three organizations continue to be in- Those three organizations continue to be in, in contract negotiation, and those contracts have not gone to the Board of Estimates as of yet.
Can you, can you walk me through, you know, when, when your office made that decision versus where we're at now and versus when we anticipate all of those coming to BOE for final approval?
Yes, I believe the announcement, and I don't have the first page of this email, I believe that the announcement was made sometime in January or February, and the notifications were sent out to community-based partners. Then, we have a very well-documented process in MONC associated with the steps that it takes to actually get a contract to Board of Estimates. It takes typically anywhere between six and eight weeks from the award notification through the entire process, with the understanding that many of our internal partners have service-level agreements that, that they attempt their best to adhere to as well. Some of the time spent, in fact, most of the time spent is going back and forth between our grants and contracts administrators and the community-based organization associated with the scope of work and associated with putting together the budget for many of these organizations that we're partnering with. They don't have dedicated development resources to do that work. And so our team is working very closely with them to do it.
Okay. Council Vice President? Thank you.
Thank you. When you were talking about Mr. Chair getting information for the salaries, are, are we talking about, are these permanent or temporary government employees or grant-funded when the grant runs out?
So these are considered temporary GSS employees. They are funded for the duration of MONC's ARPA funding, and so funded across the, the next three fiscal years.
Okay. And that money, that does include benefits, healthcare, so on, when they're hired?
So there have been some changes associated with what's included in the benefit, the total compensation package for GSS employees just in the recent month, I believe, with that guidance coming down from finance and partnership with the Department of Human Resources. And so there are some benefits that are included and others that are not.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Stokes? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one more question. The, um, Director, I think I emailed you about this, and I wanted to see if maybe there was further support that you could provide us. Obviously, we made, and first of all, thank you for allowing us to, for giving us the list so that we can do a full set of endorsements based on all of the applications. That was super important, so I really appreciate that. Some, I'm just gonna use mine as an example. Some of, out of my 10 endorsements, six got funded, thank you very much. But four did not. One was particularly disappointing, and I am wondering if, and you acknowledged that, you know, you've had to make difficult decisions. So when the, you know, so the, the projects were eligible because they came to us anyway, and then you took the endorsements into consideration. What other considerations did the team take when it came to deciding on those projects? So is it, you know, there are already a cluster of projects funded, so we couldn't fund more? Was it sort of low-key shindby? Was it something that was maybe in the proposal that might have been a red flag? Is it something that, you know, just an additional set of criteria you then had to come up with, basically, to make those decisions? And so I'm wondering if you can help us a little bit with that?
Sure. There, there's a variety of factors that were taken into account. Certainly, the proposal itself and the budget detail, we wanted to make sure that the costs that were identified in the budget actually made sense compared to the proposal and how many people were being served. We took, whether it was a citywide offering or neighborhood-specific into consideration, how it aligned with the mayor's priorities and pillar. We took council endorsements into consideration. We also received feedback from agency directors and from our deputy mayors to make sure that some of the things that were aligned with strategy. Certainly, we wouldn't want to consider or fund anything that is converse, anything that our agencies are doing. We took into account other ARPA investments, where we've made significant investment. Providing additional funding to a nonprofit organization may or may not have been warranted, considering how much funding was provided to a certain area. In addition to that, we, we looked at the status of some organizations to ensure that they were 501(c)(3)'s. We also looked at, um, there was other, other information that we looked at to make sure that it was a, an organization in good standing. You know, certainly, we wouldn't want to be on the hook for funding someone that doesn't have good fiscal practices, so those were included as well. And I think those were some of the primary factors that we considered. And I don't know if the CAO, if I covered everything, or if there's anything you want to add?
I would also offer that there's a close partnership, at least between MONC and the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs in cases where we see, or, or where Director Kearney's office sees a request for something that's public safety-related to the tune of the minimum amount of a budget, a budgeted request. There are active conversations about whether or not MONC is aware of this organization and the work that they are doing, if this is work potentially that MONC would be looking to fund. And so sometimes there are denials at this level that, given the concentration of the dollars in the allocation of the funding priorities that MONC is responsible for, it makes more sense when we're talking about public safety for a CBO to apply directly with us. And we've, and we've actually partnered in that way a few times.
Great, yeah. And that goes back to what you said earlier. If it's something that an agency is already doing, that, you know, it could be... Yeah, no, and I, I appreciate that. I think that, obviously, this is very difficult because we got way more requests than we have money. So, yeah, I think part of it was just the, I, I think that if there's, I don't know if there's a letter that went out to various folks as to why they weren't eligible, but of course, we got all those questions in terms of why they didn't get funded for the next round. So will there be some specific communication about how they could have, you know, improved their proposal, or if there was, you know, some factor that they should be working on? You know how we normally do it when I was a executive director, yeah?
So we did communicate with organizations whether they moved on or not. We also have allowed for opportunities for organizations, if they like. They can email us and ask for feedback. What we've said to those organizations that have already asked us is that, you know, give us a little bit of time, because there's a lot of
Sure.
requests that we're receiving, and the ability to respond to all 322 would be very difficult. But for anyone that is interested in feedback, we're certainly able to do that, and we will provide written feedback as requested. But I also want to be sure that for, for some organizations, the decisions were very difficult. And so I don't want it to sound like it's always a situation where, which is a badly-written proposal. That's not the case. In some cases, they were very well-written proposals that had very sound logic and very rational budgets. But we still had to make, you know, the other factors had to, to weigh in. In addition to maybe if an organization has already received lots of federal funding, that should be a factor too, as we continue to have our lens on equity and making sure that we're touching some of these smaller, less-resourced organizations. Or in cases where there are already programs that, that organizations are carrying out on behalf of the administration, ensuring that we provide funding to keep those programs going if we have to. So there were just a lot of factors, and so it didn't always come down to the quality of a proposal. There were just lots of other factors that we had to consider in making very difficult decisions.
Yeah, and I think you hit it on, for this one particular case I'm thinking about, they did get funding for something in another part of the city. And so maybe you looked at that and said, well, this was already being funded, so we couldn't do this. And so, no, that, that makes, that makes sense. And then going back to the conversation, if I may, Mr. Chair, to the conversation we had around sort of the MONC nonprofit work and then the process going through. I totally understand what's happening there because of the specificity of the work. I think what we're hearing from folks is just that, you know, they're seeing that the MONC money's getting out, and they're not seeing that this other money's getting out. So I think that's just the issue in terms of how do we communicate that to, to folks? Because I, I get it, right? You have a specific strategy with MONC and BDC, same thing. You know, they're getting some of that money out, like, we just saw it on the slide here around the MOED and others. They're getting the money out because it's a specific strategy that they've already figured out. Whereas this is, Director, you're getting everything under the sun on this one and trying to figure that out. So I get that. I just think maybe we just need to communicate that. And that way, people don't, the other thing is, and the councilman and I were just talking about this, you know, people's budgets are their budgets. And so a lot of them applied in December hoping that they'd hear back. And you had made the hope that we'd be able to hear by the end of the fiscal year so at least folks can plan based on that. So hopefully, that can be communicated out. Thank you.
Councilman Stokes?
I'm back to the food again. I had, and I'm, I guess I'm like some of the council people, I'm very disappointed because out of 10, only got two, they got funded the second round. And one of them was a young lady who'd been doing farming for 20 years. And she was gonna come in the community and help us distribute the food, and she did not get funded. And we, and I'm sitting right here talking about money that got cut. Not, I know you're talking about the FEMA money. The point is, it got cut. When that money that she applied for, for ARPA, was, she was denied. And it's, it's really disappointing for me that I'm here talking about, you know, having Broadway Easter do the food piece, when we had somebody that could have done it who had 20 years of farming here in the city, and she was denied the second round.
Councilmember Nept.
Thank you. So the, the question I had was around consideration for organizations that, let me step back. It, it appears from what was sent to the council that the council endorsements were sent to where a coun, where the, the council district that the organization is based in? Is that accurate?
Say that again?
So if an organization is based in Council District 8, the, the endorsement was sent to Council District 8?
That's not correct.
Okay, so there was an instance in which, and I'm happy to, I don't want to go into details here, but I'm happy to talk offline, where an organization submitted an application for a project that was, their, their organization is based in East Baltimore, the project was in West Baltimore. The, the, I was never given an opportunity to weigh in. Project was in my district, the proposal was in my district, they were not. And maybe this is like too in the weeds for this hearing, and we can talk offline, but it sounds like, I, I don't know how something like that could have happened.
I'm happy to talk to you offline, but just, you know, for clarity for the public, what was provided to the council was a complete list of all eligible proposals from nonprofit organizations regardless of where they provided services and where they were located. We provided information based on council districts, just in case it was something that you wanted for your personal records, or if that was a factor in consideration for you in your endorsements, but it wasn't necessary. You received an entire list of all eligible proposals, not designated just for your particular district.
But it was broken up by...
You could provide endorsements for any eligible proposal.
But it was broken, the, the report was broken down by council district? Which is why I was confused as to why this request was sent to a different council member? Or would have been listed in their district? So the, the report that we got said, Council District 8, these are the applicants for projects in your district. Council District 9, these are the applications in your district.
That's right.
So it was broken up by district? So I think it was implied, at least my understanding, was that we were being asked to weigh in for proposals that were in the 8th district, not proposals anywhere?
That, that wasn't the implication in it, and I'm...
I did it from wherever, I looked at the whole list and to see which ones made sense.
So then what was the point of breaking it up by council district?
For your awareness. For your aware, I mean, because there were lots of, of organizations so that you knew which organizations from your particular district applied for funding. So just for awareness, not necessarily for you to endorse everything that was in your district, but so that you knew which organizations had, were, were applying for funding.
Okay, all right, I'll talk offline because it was confusing. I was confused by it. I was under the understanding that we were given opportunity to weigh in for things in our district. Obviously, I read things that were everywhere, I saw the whole list and reviewed the whole list, but I didn't interpret that as it doesn't matter where this, matter where this is based. And the organization that applied also interpreted it that way and never reached out to me saying, hey, we, we put in an ARPA request, but they, they reached out to the other council office thinking that that's who they had to talk to, assuming, because it was broken down in that way. And so I, I think it was just sort of a miscommunication. The second, at least, the information that is provided, I don't think, was universally interpreted the same way. I should have called and asked, apparently. But the, the follow-up I have is the, um, so we've given examples of where organizations that may be doing, say, for example, public safety work, have been told or should be encouraged to reach out to MONC. Is that same encouragement being provided for these nonprofits that were denied to reach out to other agencies that may be pertinent? So for example, this project I'm referencing is like a workforce development project. Would they have had communication? Because they reached out to me saying, hey, is there other pots of money that we can apply for? I didn't think to tell them, hey, you can reach out to MOED, for example. Like, what was communicated to them as far as like other opportunities to fund their project?
So I, I want to be clear about communications. One is that we communicated internally with our city agencies and said, we received these requests that are relevant to your mission. So if it's workforce development, we sent those to MOED. We asked them if there were any organizations that they thought aligned with what they were doing within their allocation, to certainly reach out to those organizations. Otherwise, we would consider them as a part of the recovery program. And in some cases, to Director Jackson's comments, it was more, it was better for that organization to, to apply through MONC, and so MONC reached out to those organizations. We did not reach out to organizations, our conversations were internal. In terms of communications with nonprofits, we, in our communications, we added a link to our website where we have a page with other funding opportunities. It, it links some external organizations different from city agencies, as well as city agencies that have their own allocations. So that information is available on the recovery office website for anyone, and it, and it's available, and we did communicate that in email to any, any organizations that we communicated that they were not moving forward.
Okay. Oh, last thing I'll say, sorry, I was trying not to beat a dead horse here. But I'm gonna go ahead and take one more slide. So the, the, the point I wanted to raise about the nonprofit announcements, I mean, the, what has been communicated as far as timeline, like, I appreciate your due diligence, and so I don't want to like say that anything should be expedited. I would just make the point that, an example I'll give is that we had a, in my district, a, the affordable housing or whatever bucket that those expenditures were, there was an announcement made for, in my, it just happened to be in my district, but obviously, the projects were all over. But one of, the, the location was at a provider that's gonna be building some level of affordable housing, and their funding came through DHCD, which is great. Less than a mile away, I have a nonprofit that's also trying to do affordable housing that wasn't under the DHCD bucket, and they have yet to obviously receive final notice of, you know, what, what's, what's gonna happen? The, the, and obviously, this is already water under the bridge, but I think if we have these kind of opportunities in the future, at least some consideration to be given that perhaps, I understand like not wanting to jump the gun on individual, like first-gone, first-serve responses, like, all of that makes sense to me. But perhaps if there's an, if we're talking about affordable housing, maybe timing the announcements for those nonprofits that have applied from that separate bucket of money to say, hey, this fits into this theme broadly, even though one is an agency ask, one is a nonprofit ask. Maybe that's a way, just for consideration, to make those announcements. Because what ended up occurring was that this nonprofit's like, hey, like, we're right here too, and we gotta wait until the end of the fiscal year to figure out what's going on. and we gotta wait until the end of the fiscal year to figure out what's going on." But this other organization right up the street is already knows and are able to move forward, and they're essentially providing a similar service to the city. And so I would just add that as a consideration of timing for future city announcements, to combine them if that's possible. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? In terms of commitments from the hearing, so one, something in writing. I think this is for finance, as to when the decision was made to reassign 50 million out of revenue stabilization. Two, regarding Sage Wellness, documentation of their previous good performance in working with either Monzie or MOCJ. Three, a determination on the use of ARPA for the renter discount through the Water For All program in writing. All these are in writing, sorry. Number four, an explanation of the accounting of salaries within that total expenditure column, if you will. Also, we have some type of contractual obligation with Guide House that's been approved by BOE.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Can you provide a copy of that contract to the committee? Guide House. And can you get us all of these requests in writing by May 31st? Is that a reasonable timeframe?
Is that two weeks?
Today's the 17th, yes. Yes.
I'll try to squeeze it in between preparing for my budget hearing.
Thank you. I highly suspect that if these responses are not provided in writing, they will be revisited during budget hearings. So I think that this would help facilitate a more efficient budget hearing for everyone if we could possibly get these provided in writing by the 31st. Very good. Anyone else? Thank you all very much. We're in recess. Have a wonderful day.
Mr. Chair?